You got anything about something? Patty, you go to end, you raise your hand.
Oh, boy. I.
Good start.
Yes, I spoke with you about this and you and I had come to some solutions. But this is the, this is the idea. I'm thinking that the pond out here, since we can't see it anymore, the Olico Pond, somehow or other, Sterling needs to take care of what we have that's beautiful. And one of the things that we have is Olico Pond, but you can't see the pond anymore from the road or from here or from the other side of the road. It's all grown up. Can't see the sunset on it anymore, not that that really matters to a lot of people, but I remember when it was beautiful and people would stop and have lunch by the pond. And I did call some tree people to get estimates. It's way up there. Page Tree Service said they would have to look around to see whether we're involved. And I know we have our own tree cutters, you said, our own lumberjacks, right?
We hire a company to give you tree work.
Right, and so he didn't give me any money estimate or anything. But that was, that was one thing for the town. The other is that Great Wall of Olico up there on Newport Road. It's all overgrown with poison ivy and pickers and all kinds of things. And people have taken rocks out to make driveways. That's another icon here in Sterling that should be sacred, not messing it up. And just preserving it for other generations. Those are the only two things I was thinking about.
Thank you, Patty. You and I spoke about this yesterday. And just for the record, the company that we hire to remove dangerous trees or dead trees or both is hired for that specific purpose. So the money that's allocated for that, this particular area is $20,000, is not designed for anything but road, the trees along the side of the road, they can cause power, allergies and that sort of thing. So they wouldn't be appropriate to spend that money for what you're subscribing, that much. That would have to come into, that would have to be worked into a budget sooner or later. And I would assume that you eventually hire someone to do that kind of work. If you could get budget, get that money into the budget. Obviously, that's going to require an estimate of actual dollars. And, but that's where that would stand, but I would, actually nothing wrong with personal, it's just that I think we're going to get, somehow it's going to be worked into a budget for the town.
And a fundraiser perhaps could happen.
Perhaps, if that's the way it's done specifically. The line item in the budget now is not intended for anything, it's not for beautification process. It is for removing a dangerous tree.
And what, isn't there grants linked for something like that?
There very quickly, very well could be, very well could be. I, I, there's grants, seems to be grants available for almost anything pretty. So I would guess the grants are available for that. It would be something that I suggest the next administration should take up and look into. But as far as money being spent on that, unless it's money raised totally separately privately, then that's where that takes money in the budget, that's what has to be put into the budget. That budget process will probably start, I've been told, sometime in mid-December. And it'll last a while, but, and. So my suggestion would be to get that, put it into a budget and see if we can get it passed. Or have the money raised entirely separately.
And can we protect that Great Wall and further damage?
We can add that to the list of doing to the EPW group. It's something that is on their list, it's just that with other things that are more important from a reasonable, rational standpoint, that's what happens. They, some things have to be elevated, some things go down the bottom of the list. But I agree with you, it would be great to see that wall cleaned up on both, you know, cleaned up and look like it used to look like. Other questions? Neil?
The issue of the pond was brought up, that was one of the items that was on the Long Term Capital Planning Committee. That was one of the things that was on, that made that list. So there is at least awareness of it.
Other questions? Do you have a question?
Yes, in regards to the direct department. And the contract that's being created for the director. It seems to be a point of contention, I've talked to a few other people.
I'm sorry, I can't.
It seems to be a point of contention, I've talked to a few other people as well. There just seems to be a lot of questions, there seems to be a lot of confusion about what's going on with the direct department. The.
The contract or the?
Well, the contract is one of them. The contract is one of the things, I personally, I still don't understand why we're giving Jason special treatment. If that's what it seems like, that's the perception, that he's getting a special treatment, he's getting a contract when every other person in the hall is, is immediately. And I don't see any reason why he should get one. And he's doing a good job, which I think he is, by the way, I'm not trying to complain about him. I just think it's not a good idea to be giving him a guaranteed, like a contract right in the time. You know, in the past, we've had budget constraints given to, and we've cut salaries for everybody in the town hall because of those budget constraints. I remember us talking about that, what's that?
I don't remember that. I'm sure it has that, I'm sure it has that.
That we did that, I apologize, my mistake.
Yeah, my mistake, that's good.
But, you know, if you're going to tie the hands of the next administration, I just don't think that's the right thing to do. You know, I think that the next administration should have the liberty to do what needs to be done for the good of the town. And if that means cutting the direct department, they should have the ability to do that. Not that I think they should, I don't think they should, I think it's a good, you know, program, but I do think, you know, we should be able to look at that program in detail to decide what's best for the town. I forget, I'm trying, it kind of ties the hands of the next administration, I just don't think that's the right thing to do.
When we get to the negotiations with the lawyer, which hasn't been done yet, that lawsuit will be brought up?
Well, I think he should be treated the same as any other employee.
Do we have a copy of said contract?
Go ahead, another question?
Are we going to be able to see that contract and examine it before actually?
That's between the employee and the employer. The employee is Jason, the employer would be the board of elect.
Aren't you, aren't you saying since the employer? Was that to the, are the citizens the employer to the?
Okay, let me explain that, just one second, you hand out, how close you are to that. There are certain things, this being one of them, that the Board of Elects election is elected to take care of. We were elected by the populace to take care, running, managing the town, and it's much better word than running. Some of the deals, some of the things that need to be done have, they can't all go to public opinion. That's why we were elected. This is one of them. Yes, ma'am?
But wouldn't that mean that when concerns are brought to you about, when concerns are brought to you about your employee, then, then shouldn't you have to ask on those?
I believe we haven't, we haven't acted on what? What is, we haven't acted on?
Um, well, you, there was a phone call the other day about some questions that you seemed very reluctant to answer regarding Jason.
I wasn't reluctant to answer, I believe I was speaking with you?
No.
Okay, the person I was speaking with was making, describing situations in the rec department, they were right at the edge of accusation. And accusations don't always be terrible things, that word has a bad connotation, but basically this, they were, the, well, I was told that they were peoples of, members of the staff, they were thinking about leaving because of treatment that he had, that he'd forgotten, that he wasn't there often enough, he being Jason, by the way. And I asked that person for her name so that we could bring the people in, that that person making these charges, if you will, and the person that being charged is a broad against, which is the rec director, I asked that that could have that name so the three of us, Jason, this individual and myself, could sit down and discuss these issues. I said Jason would be happy to do that.
But there was also questions about the budget too.
That person that was making these charges did not, then refused to say, I don't want to get involved. I hate to tell you, but you already are involved, you picked the phone call.
Okay, but there was also questions about the budget, so wouldn't that be your job to look into that?
Certainly.
And not just brush it off?
In that phone call.
Interesting.
They would have mentioned that budget question. There were questions about, as I recall the question, and I said, if you would give me your name so we can sit down and discuss this, because we've done this in the past. We've had, we've had problems with other staff members or problems that staff members came meeting with and said, someone who is giving me a hard time, could we sit down and talk about it? We've done this. He and I sat down with an individual one time, in the office, three of us, we talked it over. And we came to some sort of resolution. That's what I was suggesting to this lady, that's law and mercy. If you're making these charges, then the person to whom you're making those charges has the right to face its accuser. That's just a law that everybody lives by. Would that person that, whoever that made a bet, would she be happy if people were making charges about her and she had no chance to respond?
Well, I would think that my, if it were in my job, my position, if a, if somebody went to my boss and said that they had issues with how I was conducting my job and everything else, then my boss would take it upon himself to do some investigating to make sure that I am doing my job correctly, to make sure that I am budgeting correctly, to make sure that people are getting receipts for their cash payments, people are getting change for their cash payments. And those are things that are happening. And those are things that are, you basically, from what I understand, you basically said that if that, this person wasn't going to give their name, then you weren't going to investigate at all.
I, the lady finally left, left me with the information, I will think it over.
Okay, but are you going to investigate?
What?
Are you going to investigate?
Well, if I think that, the thing that's in charge is credible, if you can't substantiate.
Okay, well, how about the fact that I never got a receipt for my cash payment for rec and he never gave me change? That's not enough of an accusation to look into some budget, so look into the paper?
This is very first ever. This is the very first ever.
Well, I'm bringing it up now, you have been.
I'd be glad to talk to you about it.
But the concern of the budget has absolutely been brought up to you. And you said because somebody wouldn't give their name, that you wouldn't look into it. They shouldn't have to give their name and put their head on the spike for you to look into a situation. And now you're trying to give them a contract when there's question from the parents of rec of the responsibilities that he's even taking.
Then it's time to all sit down and talk about it.
It would be great.
I'd be glad to do that. And I told that lady on the phone that I would, that he would be happy to do that as well. Pretty hard to get a three-way conversation when one member's not willing to give a name.
Okay, but again, you still, it's still your job to investigate.
That's, that's the beginning of an investigation, right there. That's the beginning of an investigation.
To say that you aren't, okay.
No, I was like, I said to her, if you'll give me your name, we can sit down and discuss this as the three of us. And he would be glad to talk about it, and I would certainly be glad to talk about it.
But that was the only way to do anything, it wouldn't be looking into things, it would be nothing. But it's, we'll move on, you can, the next person.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a way to set up a meeting with the rec and the staff and the parent? To talk through any concerns?
I would see no reason why not.
And how would we do that?
Start with the rec director. And I can talk to him, ask him if he can set up a meeting with the parents, if there are parents, whether it's just one parent or more parents. They certainly can sit down and talk about it, there's no reason why they can't do that. I see no reason at all. And I was the woman actually, I talked to this individual about the same thing. But it's just, it's just that you can't get, how are you going to get a three-way conversation with only two people?
My point is not about a three-way conversation, if you're working with.
And that's how I would start looking into it. That doesn't mean it would stay there, but it means that's how it would begin. We have to start from there. Any other questions about?
Steve, regarding this, I think part of the problem like this, there seems to be a little lack of oversight on the, on the direct department, there used to be a committee. And I understand, you know, the, the problem that was expressed about it was that it was starting to take some of the committee. But now you only have, you have a rec director, that answers directly to you or the board. And there's, there's no, there's no other oversight other than that. And it, it invites suspicion, even if there isn't a good reason for it. But when you, when you got $100,000 cash money flowing through that department and there's, there's not a lot of checks and balances on it that people are aware of anyway, then that, it raises flag in people's minds.
As far as checks and balances are concerned, Steve, you heard the description, you were here the night because you were on the Board of Finance, you heard the description.
I wasn't here that night.
He wasn't there.
He wasn't there, I'm sorry, I believe you were.
I was there.
Jason gave a detailed description of how the money is handled, accounted for, and the checks and balances involved with the treasurer. And, I mean, it's Board of Finance, which is a responsible for all the finances of the town. They listened to that and they said that is a satisfactory way of doing business.
I have a question, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'll try yours. Every conversation we've had with Jason, he's very defensive, he doesn't give clear answers, and he deflects. That's probably a personality quirk, I get that. He has consistently said, I charge the parents of Sterling residents $700 or $750, my memory isn't quite good about that, for the summer program. Never once I hear him say, I also charge $100 registration fee. So he's actually charging $850 to residents. And we keep going back to, or my brain keeps going back to, I know he gave us his little educational thing with his horn, but it still really didn't answer the question. When you go to the treasurer and you say, are you saying I took in X amount of dollars from this many children? It doesn't seem like it really is truly accurate system. And his performance that night really was kind of a deflection. And I know it satisfied some people, but it was not, it was, it was not accurate. It was not, I shouldn't say accurate, it wasn't, it wasn't satisfactory to really answer those questions. To say, oh, totally get it, dude, get it. It just doesn't.
But you did get the reaction of Board of Finance.
Yeah. It's all up to you.
No, it's up to them.
No, they, they gave the department.
They gave the responsibility, they gave the oversight responsibility to us.
And I, I don't have any children in the rec department, my kids are two old now, and we never did anyway. I always see Jenny. When the kids are there or when there's a nighttime thing, I see Jenny. When there's a, we took one bus trip, it was Jenny, never saw Jason. And when I'm here at the town hall, which I am frequently, I see him here when there's no children. Which I get, maybe he's the director, she's the coordinator, you know, maybe that's how things work. But anytime I've asked him questions personally, he does not really answer the questions. And it, like Steve was saying, he could be doing the best job, he could be the most honest guy. But the way he interacts with people causes so much suspicion and it raises all these red flags. So I think most people are saying, hey, can we look into this? Let me make sure my money was accounted for, make sure I got my receipt. You know, it's a big budget. It really is. And it seems like all the oversight was removed because somebody got their notes in a pinch about having people looking after him.
Yes.
Speaking of checks and balances, so I too have never gotten a receipt for any payments made to rec. What are the checks and balances? Because he's not here when the kids are here. There's no cameras in the office. So when he's doing money, what checks and balances are there?
The checks and balances he described to the Board of Finance was the fact where he counted, he accounts for all the money and goes in a variety of places because it comes from a variety of sources. He puts all that information into a folder, puts it in the night drop box if it's the time when no one's here, which people may. On Monday morning, frequently it's done on a Friday, so Monday morning, our treasurer takes that and accounts for all the money the way, the way he's got it accounted for. She's had two people looking at the same numbers, and if there are any questions, she challenges them on those questions and they iron it out.
That doesn't answer the question.
That, that's as much as I know of the system. I think, I answered, you suggested a few minutes ago about a possible meeting with the families. I think that may be where we start, okay? I can bring us all this up to Jason, and I'd be glad to do that when I, you know, the next time that we get together, which we know that will be very shortly out of the zoom. As far as the checks and balances, if, if that meeting determines all these questions that are being brought up here now should be brought up at a meeting with him. And that will be a start as to try to get to the bottom of what, if there's a problem, then what is, you folks need to be satisfied.
And also brought up paying for rec online like we do for our taxes. But that was shot down because of the possible fees. I take cash out and pay $4 at the ATM, I would be happy to pay a $2 or $5 fee to pay that online and then it's all recorded. So is that a possibility?
That is certainly a possibility. It's just that I was told in order to do that, it'll, it will cut out certain things. And I don't know every last detail of that program, okay? If we hire a rec director, they don't, I'm not the rec director, okay? But he has mentioned that as a possibility because someone has said, what if we did everything online? His feeling is that it would, it would eliminate some people from having to be able to do this and it would eliminate other things. And what those other things are, I frankly do not know. But I would be glad to talk about it with him and with the group. And if the families want to get together, let me talk to him as soon as I can and see if we can set up a meeting with, and all these questions that have been brought up now, including yours, should be brought up at that meeting. Unless, if there's some way to come up with an answer, then that's what we should do. The selectmen can vote, all three of us can be there, or we can let, I can just be there with Jason and you folks, or he can be there with, well, not with any of us here. But everything, including that online approach. It, it's, it may be the only answer that satisfies everybody.
I know Bristol does it and it works out perfectly.
Right, well, you see, now that's what we need to hear. Because I've written nothing but negative about the online thing as what would, it would eliminate some things that were, it wouldn't include as many people, I think, as what's included now. So if that's something, we're saying that it can work, then my only, let's bring it up and see if we can make it work.
Where are you hearing the negative things about the system?
From Jason primarily. He feels though, he would be a number of families that might not be able to be included as they are now.
At that Board of Finance meeting when he was giving us his demonstration of that with his application thing, I believe, and I'll, maybe I'll go back and re-watch to double check that, I believe he said a copy goes to the parents and a copy goes in the folder. So if these parents have not received what he's saying he's doing, again, that raises those red flags.
Anyway.
Again, he could be doing everything right, but he's acting shady.
And now we're going to walk him out of contract.
Yes, Jeff, I'm right. What necessitated the want for a contract? Like, how did this come about? We've operated for over 35 years without a contract in that position, all of a sudden now there's a contract necessity?
Well, quite frankly, without getting into too many weeds, it was concerned about what might happen in November, in terms of change of administration. And he felt as though he'd like to have a little protection. Okay. So that's.
And any other employees feel that way too?
None in the company, yeah.
But isn't that abnormal, or if people vote in a different administration to represent them, if part of that means changes to the rec department, well, that's what the people are voting for. Why are we locking him in and tying the hands of the next administration?
We haven't locked him in yet, Steve.
Well, why are we even considering it?
Well, it only happened yet. In fairness, Jack, I mean, we're both running. Do you feel comfortable having an employee that you cannot?
Well, I was very concerned right now with this Lee said, about not getting a receipt for a cash payment. Personally, I would, I would always ask for a receipt if I gave cash, but that really concerns me.
I agree.
But you also got to understand the mistakes of dropping kids and riding in the car and the craziness of it all to get a receipt was. I didn't even ask. And if Jason's handling all the money, why is he not here to give yours?
Is he the only one that takes the money?
No, but it's not, it's not standard procedure. So why would any of the staff give it to you if he's not doing it himself?
Yes, ma'am.
Just follow up to the contract side, so you entered into this already, is legal involved? You said the attorney.
He is supposed to contact an attorney to talk about this situation. Nothing has been discussed at all yet, they haven't even gotten together yet on it.
Have you contacted our attorney?
No.
All right, so when we get to that point, are you treating this as state statute collective bargaining like the school board does? Are we going to be paying for his representation as well as he's a town employee?
Those questions will all be answered when we get to talk to the attorney, Frank. I do not know what's in store yet. I think we have to look at the whole thing differently with some of the comments that have been brought up this morning about, tonight about tying the hands of the future administration. I think that's something we certainly should consider. I, I dare say the whole thing has to be looked at a little more closely than it has been so far. Okay, I'll give you that. And before we go any farther with this, then we will certainly, he and I will certainly have this conversation and maybe the entire board will have this conversation with him so that we can determine just what is going to happen at this point, okay? There's all kinds of questions about this that I can't particularly answer. There has been no attorney brought into this at the moment, it's just been suggested. Why, frankly, it's been suggested long enough ago back in the summer, so why, nothing's happened so far? It's between Jason and the attorney. And I don't know why nothing's happened so far, but I can say, all right, nothing has happened yet. Yeah.
I'm sorry to keep interrupting you. When you say attorney, I could have sworn it's been said to me a couple times, the town attorney.
The town attorney, the town attorney that we use for normal business matters is fellow named Rick Rock.
Yeah.
He works for Halloran and Sage. Halloran and Sage also hires several other attorneys to handle different kinds of work, contract work, personnel issues. Over the years, we've used several of their employees. The contract attorney is the one in question here.
So is that considered?
With town attorney, only because he works with Halloran and Sage, who we employ in general.
Ergo, is the town paying for the contract attorney because he works for the same firm? Or did you just recommend that firm to Jason to?
Having done, worked with that company for the last several years, I told them that would be the attorney that you'd want to speak with. So yes, we're going to have to pay for that, well, without, I mean, it's not going to get attorney speed, you're not going to get an attorney to waive the fees.
So you have an attorney that an employee, you have the attorney that the town's going to pay for that the employee is trying to work out a contract with? I think that was what Frank was asking.
Well, the contracts, the attorney has to work up a contract.
Is it being paid for by the town?
Yes, it's going to have to be paid for by the town, because the town.
Yeah.
There's also going to be dual representation. He gets his own and you're going to need yours. So if you're using Halloran and Sage, he can't. Just like, remember when we had the problem over here with this gravel pit and they had to use a different attorney?
Yeah.
Because they were representing.
Yeah.
The same issue is going to prompt here and we're going to pay twice. Just, and again, it would be more preemptive for you three, if you're collective bargaining, to have a contract drafted up first, then approach this. But if he's going out and using our tax knowledge right away, that to me seems pretty scary because not only are you tying the hands of one individual, how long before everybody in this building goes after the same contract? Because once you give it to one, lock my words, within three months, everybody in this building.
That would happen before.
Yeah. And if they were smart, they would unionize to get the same benefits.
We'll have enough of a week on time to use.
Just the road you go down.
We're all afraid of losing our jobs. My husband was laid off, he's been laid off three times, right? First time before we made our first mortgage payment, he got laid off. And then when I was pregnant with our 12th baby, he got laid off. We're all afraid of getting laid off. Why does Jason, you know, is he exempt from the risk of getting laid off? You know what I mean? He's not part of the union, he's, it's, I mean.
It goes back to what I said, he should be treated like the everyone in the world. Okay, it's that simple.
I'm dying here for Peter.
I got a reference, you know, September 17, you keep talking about contracts. You all agreed that it was going to be a job description, no contract.
Right.
And also, these, these personnel that are here, they're hired at will. Quote, unquote, at will.
That's correct. That's correct.
And I've inquired about this throughout Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Connecticut. All your directors are hired at will, they do not have a contract. It's a job description, and I looked it up online, what job description is for a director. I don't know why you gotta hire a lawyer, it's already available in the state of Connecticut, what the job description is. So I don't understand why you gotta spend three or five thousand dollars for a lawyer to come up with a contract. It's already established what a job description is of a director, recreation director. All you gotta do is look it up online, I don't understand why you don't do that. And it's in your minutes.
I'm reading.
Job description.
Yes, Frank.
September seventeen.
Yeah.
At will. And you changed it to job description for Jack's job description, and you all agreed upon it.
Oh, it sounds to me like I gotta have a conversation with Jason.
What's that?
I say it sounds to me like I gotta have a serious conversation with Jason.
I think there should be more than one person in on that conversation.
The board can do that.
Agreed.
Yes, Ed.
Are there background checks on these guys?
We have talked about back, answer your question is no.
But he deals with kids, doesn't he?
What's that?
Well, he's the boss of a lot of kids, don't they have to have a background check?
He's saying he, he deals with kids, should we have had a background check?
Isn't there a state law that the county safety departments?
Is there? A lot of good questions. Jason, David brought a background check before, it's one of those things that we just haven't done, we probably should have done, but we haven't done. And just one more thing to bring up to the, just in this mix of things that we brought up to Jason. And we can discuss that background, background check, we went, we want to, we got that paperwork all out, and we need to talk about doing it. For some reason or other, I don't know, David got sick of something that died in an actual death, not he didn't die in an actual death. The whole subject died in an actual death, but it just didn't get done. Probably of anybody in the room, of anybody in the building that should have a background check, that they should be the recreation director.
For sure.
Isn't it state statute that anybody involving children has to have?
They may have.
Like, just for me to go to DC, I had to get fingerprinted and ran.
I wonder how many of the rec parents know that he's never had a background check, because that is a really big.
Just, just to be clear, he didn't link to not state, he didn't, he said he didn't know if he did. I wanna be real cautious with that, because I'm assuming the school with Ted and everybody else probably asked for one.
That would really help sell it. Just, just one more point on that. I asked Jason last, last year, when the state was talking about changing the summer rec program requirements for staff and having the safe environment training, and I was in there, I said, hey, I believe the state just passed this, and he goes, all right, I guess we'll look into that. I asked them again last week, I said, what are you gonna do about safe environment? He goes, I haven't even looked at it yet. I said, if you work in the state of Connecticut, when you're dealing with children, if my twenty-one-year-old wants to do CCD at the, at the church, they have to attend safe environments. If, if you're running a small daycare, whenever you're working with children, you have to have these trainings in, per the state of Connecticut. And it seems, and again, maybe doing a great job, but it seems like there's a very lax attitude when it comes to some of the requirements and some of the rules. So again, I, if there's a discussion to happen, I think it should be in a group.
The young lady in the corner suggested that first.
Yeah.
That the families get together, I see no reason why all of these topics can't be brought up at a meeting. What do you, you see any reason why they can't be brought up?
No.
And if all of them should be.
Oh.
Wouldn't it make more sense if the rec department had a board, so all these things could be discussed, they might have a board and.
Well, let's put it this way, Steve, if it has a board that was as ineffective as the one that was there before, it would not make any sense at all. Nothing against anybody that was on that board, but that was an ineffective board in terms of they, they just didn't need to be, and that's why they no longer are. Yes, Ed.
But it seems like the board of selectmen's not doing a proper job either. You know, as far as all the background checks and all that stuff, that's important stuff. Okay, I mean, I think that board probably, if you guys can't handle it, maybe a board would be a good idea.
If you feel strongly enough, if, let's put it this way, there's a way to create a board, okay? If you folks feel strongly enough that it should be a board, or it's like, then it has to be an ordinance drafted, and that has to go through, basically, a process which would be, come here, we have to agree to it, they have to set a town meeting, and the town meeting would, would basically agree that the ordinance should be enacted, which would be a board of, call it whatever, a recreation board, call it whatever we like. That's how it's done, but that's, that's the only way to create a board like that. If you feel strongly enough about it, then I suggest that you follow that procedure and get it done. I personally don't think that it's necessary, but that's, I, I know I'm looking at it from a different point of view.
Was there an ordinance before, for the, for the previous board?
Yes.
So how did that get?
It was rescinded. And we had a meeting, and we disbanded that board.
To expand the ordinance.
Yes. It was ineffective. It was contentious.
Dictatorship, and now, now you're left with a dictatorship, even if you didn't have a board, even if you had, let's say, the director and the assistant director, or the assistant director working together and not having the director be a dictator. There's gotta be somebody who is, even if it's not Jason, even if it's somebody else, somebody who's in that position should have somebody to answer to. They shouldn't be able to just dismiss questions and not, not be held accountable.
Some of the questions that have been brought up here tonight, not all of them certainly, but most, some of them have, I mean, your question, for instance, about not getting receipts. That is the very first time I've heard it.
Yeah, me too.
I have no one in front of that to my attention until tonight. That's a serious problem.
Isn't that something that you should check, though, as his boss?
What's that?
Isn't that something you should check?
Like those folders.
I've had that much machine to check, I've only heard about a half an hour.
But then even those folders that you guys just said that, it was during a finance meeting, right, that this was already brought up? So those folders that he's submitting don't have receipts in them?
But they have a what?
Don't have receipt in them?
Far as I know, they have receipts in them. I've never seen them. I have a treasurer, we have a treasurer who handles all that. We have a recreation director who handles that. They communicate, and they handle the situation. I have not heard of any issues of this nature until this evening.
I have a team of twelve that I make sure are doing their job. Whether I think they are or not, I'm still double checking them. That's my job. That should be your job.
Okay, well, I'd like to know that apparently I'm not doing my job correctly. I'll admit it, I'm not perfect.
Nobody.
But I, I hire people, we hire people we feel can do the job, and as far as I'm concerned, they do a very good job. My understanding is, there's been a checks and balances situation that has met the approval of the board of finance. They are elected to take care of the finances of the town. The situation was described to them, they said, it sounds to us as if you're doing the job correctly. Now, I don't know what higher authority can go to, frankly. They on the board is elected, not appointed, they're elected to take care of the finances. If they seem to think that that's the thing they described is okay, they give it their endorsement. Then why should I challenge that?
They should be challenging it first.
What's that?
They should be challenging it and then bringing it to you.
Who's who?
The board of finance.
So who?
The board of finance.
Yeah, they do.
They haven't heard of this, and then if you brought, then if you come to a meeting of the board of finance and explain these issues to them? They need everyone.
I didn't know it was an issue until now.
No, but I'm saying, it's pretty hard for them to act on something if they don't know about it. How would the board of finance possibly know about these active things?
So I wanna know what receipts they see, because if they didn't see receipts, they would know there's a problem.
Yeah, okay. Can I just follow up one piece of that? I don't, I don't care about the money side right now, if that's something I can be into with Sarah later. When you disbanded or dissolved that ordinance, did you as an employer draft up a code of conduct specific to that particular job description, which stated, A, that they had that background checks, B, everybody that's around those children needed to be safety trained, checked as well for their backgrounds? I'm just curious, because like I'm hearing like twelve employees, fifty, hundred, two hundred kids, the school should hopefully be on this, and I'm gonna weigh that, I think that they may have already done this, but do you have any way to confirm that these things have been done? And within a timely manner like tomorrow? Because that's a huge accusation if that's not done on many levels.
I intend to have a conversation with them tomorrow.
Yeah, that'll happen.
That conversation will go, I don't know what the answer to the question is gonna be, but I'm just currently asking. For after-school programs.
No, we're discussing, we're not.
Right, but you said after-school programs.
Yeah, but it's like if we were to send them to take the day care.
Well.
I can assure you.
It's not like the school has anything involved.
I can assure you, Frank, this conversation will be had tomorrow, I appreciate it, and I will get whatever answers I can get, and we're gonna see if we can get a meeting of the parents together, but I think we've probably discussed it as much as we need to, with enough, certainly, there have concerns that have been brought up. Ashley's taking minutes, and therefore, I can, what I don't remember, I can talk to her about, and we can get this, many of these questions asked and hopefully answered tomorrow, all right? We're gonna move on to the approval of the minutes, we talked about the minutes of September third. We need to make an amendment to those minutes. That's the seventeenth or the third. On the, I think it's unfinished business item F, then we discussed the board of finance email address for Bob Solbury. That email address for, for him, as well as for the selectmen, the chairman of the board of finance, the inland windlands courses commission, planning and zoning commission, and economic development commission, but that's what that, that those minutes should read, because that email address is not just for him, it's for all of those chairs. I'm a promotional job, except the minutes. Of September third? You know, so we have this conversation some other time, please, sorry. Frank, excuse me, we have a conversation other than the, I appreciate it, sorry. Okay, that's it, you have seconded that one?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Uh, all right.
Okay. Now we take the minutes of the seventeenth of September, and the amendment there has to do with the capital account that we agreed to make for the board of, the recreation department. That should read, there was a misunderstanding within the meeting, the creation of a recreation department capital account is unnecessary as one already exists. At the time we had the meeting, we did not know that, we checked anyway, and therefore, we don't need to create another one because there already is one. Do we hear a motion to accept that?
Make a motion to accept.
You know, something, motion to accept the minutes, the amended minutes of the seventeenth meeting, September seventeenth meeting, all in favor? Uh, all opposed? Let's get back to the business at hand, yeah. That's that. All right. Correspondence, we had a letter given to us and a check given to us roughly a week ago. That was from Kirma, it actually dated on, hmm, is everything gonna date on? And what it says, it maps to a check that we've given for members equity distribution, where the check was for eighty-two hundred and sixteen dollars, and that is something we do not need to act on, it's just that we should make aware of it, we did get that check. We get a check every year, almost every year, in that general decision that this year would be two sixteen. Next item would be the OSHA citation and notification of penalties. We have been notified, OSHA was notified by an anonymous source, has to stay that way, because we don't know who this, about some ceiling tiles that fell down in room five, next, in the next hall, the hallway. And we were, had a visit from OSHA, and they said the possibility that those ceiling tiles were asbestos or big dangerous asbestos. And so we're in the process of the OSHA investigation. What we had to do right off the bat was to hire the company Mystic Air Quality, came in last Tuesday, we go yesterday, and conducted a survey of the entire building. And we got the results of that survey this afternoon, which we forwarded to OSHA. And OSHA and I will have a conversation tomorrow morning, that's Connecticut OSHA, will have a conversation called the informal conference. Part of the process, a long detailed process, that's part of the process, and they have the information that we have now, and we will discuss it together to find out what the ramifications of that survey are. We have a, initially, they gave us a penalty of four hundred and twenty dollars for, to be paid on November sixth. That was for, the penalty was because someone, our trainer, Sam McWire, actually picked up those tiles that fell from the ceiling due to a water leak, and without informing her that they were asbestos related or could have been. So we'll talk about that, that as well. So that's just the whole deal with the asbestos suspension. Next one is resignation of Judy Andre from the Economic Development Commission, I'll read you that brief letter. A longtime member of that commission, to whom it may concern, due to genetic medical condition, I find it necessary to leave my position as a member of the Economic Development Commission. It was a privilege to have served as a member sincerely, Judy Andre. I suggest we accept that?
I may both accept that with regret.
And also, motion made in second that we would accept Judy Andre's resignation from the Economic Development Commission with regret. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business is the discussion regarding employment contract for Jason Lacherty. We do not need to go into that in any great detail, we have already done so. So there will be a conversation with, he and I will have a conversation tomorrow morning, and we'll, and we'll get as much information as we possibly can for that. The sec, next thing is discussion regarding approval of suggested creation of a road resurfacing capital account. That was approved by the board of selectmen at their last meeting. And we have a town meeting set up for that very purpose on the sixteenth of our fourth. A town meeting, which the public is invited, obviously. We have, next item is discussion regarding the removal and installation of fencing at the, the Neil Brook Park. That process started on Monday, is continuing, we'll take care of, be done throughout the rest of this week and perhaps the early autumn, next question. Item D, discussion regarding new camera, wifi, heavy-duty locking, electric covers for the Zimo, and then update on that, as well as the next item, which are the cameras for the gym. The IT department tells us that there'll be a couple more weeks before they could get the right equipment to do that, and when they do, they'll have it all lined up to put those in. Item S, discussion regarding retirement plans for the town hall updates. The treasurer has looked into this, and she suggested we table this item to a future date.
We're going to table it.
And also, motion made in second that we table the item to a future date. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Item G, discussion regarding code of conduct. Two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, when we met last, I handed both of you gentlemen a copy of the revised code of conduct, and is, why would I like to know what your opinion on this is, what would I can do about?
I would make a motion to re-accept it. I just want a question first on that, can we change that, that code of conduct? After, if we make a motion now and accept it, can we change that?
Most, any, any ordinance can make that.
All right.
With, with the, you know, going through the process.
Okay.
Motion made in seconded, that's, okay, thank you, that we approve and adopt the code of, the revised code of conduct, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion regarding recreation department finances and budget. That is a situation where he also described this situation to the board of finance, stating that his anticipated revenues, which was seventy-five thousand dollars, actually turned out to be a hundred and four thousand dollars, was at twenty-nine thousand dollars. He asked that that money could be put into a capital account, which we mentioned briefly earlier. Right at the moment, that must, that money sits in the general fund of the town. So to remove that money, and the board of finance approved, by the way, approved, taking that twenty-nine thousand and putting it into a capital account. In order to do so, what has to happen is that have to go through a town meeting, if the town agrees to remove it from the fund balance, or the general fund, if you will, to the cap, the recreation capital account. So that's what, with that town meeting that we have scheduled, will take that issue as well. That's just an explanation how that has to happen. Moving on to the business. We have four pieces of seventy-two-inch pelvic bike that we purchased with the intent of using it replacing a COVID on St. Millville Road. That work has been done in a different manner, which means we still now own four twenty-foot pieces of seventy-two-inch plastic pelvic bike. We have tried to get rid of them through, I spoke to the folks at D-CO at their last meeting in, whenever that was, August, I guess. And I had a few interested parties that came, contacted me, they said they might be interested, but that's as far as it's ever gotten. The company that bought, that we bought them from, in Maine, I thought would be willing to take them back at a reduced rate and perhaps sort of some sort of a restocking fee, and they are not interested in doing that at all. So we have to decide what we're gonna do about getting rid of them. We don't, they're not doing anybody any harm, well, they are, they're sitting in our, our stockyard up on the top of the industrial park, it's just that since we, the chances of needing them are almost nil, the idea would be to get them back, get them. The idea would be to get them back, get them sold. Any suggestions?
If you get a chance this week, call Foster, because I think they were the ones who called the work. They might be interested.
Okay. And if that doesn't work, any other suggestion?
Yeah, uh, I think the government has a, uh, some kind of a website that we can put on, I don't think we can put on Marketplace, because I don't think, uh, uh, small governments or whoever are supposed to use Marketplace. Is anybody know that's, no? I don't think they can, but.
We do have, there's a, there's an auction process called GoGo.
Yeah.
And we actually got rid of all the air conditioners that used to be in the building, right, there were that wooden panelists, there was an air conditioner and several others in the building. And we managed to get rid of those through that organization too. So I will call, I'll call Foster, find out if they're interested. But I, actually, the gentleman that we bought these from in Maine said he would call around to find out if anybody in the area, because he deals with a large number of people, anybody would be interested in buying them. And I called, and that's as far as that went. Um, they weren't, you know, they said to get back to you, well, that was a month and a half ago, and they haven't so far, so that leads me to think they're not, they're not a, uh, so I'll call Foster, and if not, then, is it, would you like to make a motion that if it doesn't work out, we can go to go for the, the government auction?
Yeah. I, I will make that.
What about you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion made in second that if, if the local, if calling Foster Rhode Island doesn't work out for these bikes, then we will put them on GoGo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the bills. Total bills for this particular night's meeting come to three hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Motion made in second, we table the bill as presented. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? The ayes have it, or motion carries. The last item of business, next to the last item of business, is the treasurer's report,